有誰想向 board 這時發表意見？ 我將這時結束會議，board 有什麼問題？
我很久以來來過。
好，那我就讓這個事務所的法官從這裡離開。public 有什麼意見？有誰想向 board 發表意見？ 這是一個好的時間。
所以那是上個週末。我們今年最大的項目是監獄擴展，我們需要約 $20 million 留給監獄，加上舊的 renovations。我們的航站口， $8 million 到 $10 million，我們還在擴張。是，我知道，我知道。有什麼問題嗎？或者你想要我做什麼？
對不起，各位，因為我車子。
沒問題。
我想澄清我上次在 January 5 日的討論。Ben Arnold 請問我會不會有稅務增加，關於水岸復活項目。我告訴 Ben 我們不會有稅務，這不對。在2003 年的 June 會見會， board 稱舉了同意鎮村的貢獻，這個項目和 $122,000 加其他種類的貢獻，比如地下電力，街道燈，以及 Montgomery 街的排水改造。majority 的 board 感覺鎮村的貢獻 $122,000 是合理的和實際的。整個項目總成本是約 $1.6 million。board 沒有 intention to fund this cost 過一段時間。majority 的 cost 會被分給多樣的獎項，已經收到的，或者其他的獎項，已經要求的。我們現在等待聽說，有三個 $350,000 的 additional 資助被批准。consensus 的事實理解，鎮村的成本將會是繼續水岸復活項目，我將要發表 following motion to the board to consideration。鎮村在 Rossis Point 會涉及所有 permit control 市場，我們希望停止任何關於水岸項目 further action 6到12 月。
As men.
Second. Motion made, the second in discussion.
I just have a question for our stand, I mean now's the time, but. What, is that for training, you said?
That's, that's what I was told, it's for training, training conferences. For the.
Downtown revitalization.
If you don't understand what it is, they have picked, what is it, four, four training dates in March and April. March, June, I don't know, I don't have them right in front of me, but. They're gonna send people, and what I understand, that they set the money up to us, but they're gonna pay for the, we're sending it back to them to pay for this. Sounds like a good state democracy to me, but.
A little bit easier than they kept it.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
No.
All who's in favor, vote by your side of the line.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
Yes, we received a letter dated January first from Sandra Kelly at Old Times Cafe to Rousas Point. Village Clerk Sandra Kelly would like permission from the Village of Rousas Point to renew the liquor license for Old Times Cafe for the year 2004. It's signed sincerely Sandra Kelly.
She doesn't need permission. It's all just a permission only.
This is a certified, I'm sorry, this, I have to mention, this is a certified letter that we received. Second, a letter we received, it was from the Department of State, it was dated January sixth. It's a copy of the letter that was sent to Mr. Tatro, who is our code enforcement officer. Dear Mr. Tatro, congratulations, you have completed the certification for basic code enforcement. Your certification number is, and they give it, we are pleased to recognize your accomplishments and trust you will continue your fire service career development through Wink Service and Advanced and Service Training Programs. Do you have, should you have any questions regarding the certification process, please contact the Office of Fire Prevention. And it's signed by James Burns, State Fire Administrator, Office of Fire Prevention and Control. We received a letter from Donna Marks, who's a registered nurse, school nurse at the Rousas Point Elementary School. It was addressed to Chief Craig. The subject was Toys for Tots, it was dated January fourteenth. Dear Chief Craig, I am writing with gratitude on behalf of the Rousas Point Elementary School to thank you for putting us in contact with the Toys for Tots organization again this year. Especially this year with the closing of the JCEO office in Champlain. Many parents were left without hope of providing presents for their children at Christmas. With your assistance, we were able to make Christmas a little brighter for these children and their families. A special thank you, Chief Craig, to you and Officer Aaron Lefay for going to meet the training in Plattsburgh. Once again, our most sincere thanks for helping us to make some very special Christmas memories for the children of our school. And we also received a letter from Charles Garviano, who is the chairman of the Empire State Development Corporation, dated January ninth. It was addressed, dear Mayor Rivers. Governor Pataki has asked me to respond to a recent letter to him regarding Wyatt Pharmaceuticals. This administration has been working aggressively to create a business-friendly environment that allows companies to grow and prosper in New York State. The success of our economy is largely due to my commitments to cutting business taxes, eliminating red tape, reducing state spending, and reforming workers' compensation. Empire State Development Strategic Business Division in Albany continues to work closely with Wyatt Labs to ensure it remains one of New York State's premier pharmaceutical companies. In addition, ESDS North Country Regional Office located in Plattsburgh is working with area manufacturers, company officials, and local public and political leaders to assist in economic revitalization of the region. We will continue to explore all opportunities that will help Wyatt maintain their operations and employment in the North Country. On behalf of the governor, thank you for writing, and please be sure that we are committed to providing jobs and business opportunities for all residents of New York State. And the next one was a memo that was, I received, dated January sixth. It was from our village justice, Mr. Herson. Memo has to do with the audit requirement. It says the court, in accordance with the Uniform Justice Court Act 2019-A and Town Log 123, is required to present its records at least once a year to the auditing board of the village to be examined by the board for a certified public accountant or public account. All records are available to be audited and signed by Justice Herson. Last year, actually, we had a, we had someone do that. I don't know if I can get that.
Yeah, I've done it the past two years. I'd be happy to do again, just tell me if there's a problem.
Thank you, trustee Medjoe.
I will notify them. Thank you. The last corvidic correspondence I had is not on the agenda, it was received today. It's from Montgomery Post Hook and Ladder Company, number one. It was signed by Dennis Roberts as secretary. Dear Mayor and trustees, we wish to inform you of a new member who was approved by our company for a probationary period of six months. His name is Antonio LaPerry, 677 Prospect Street, Champlain, New York. Also, please be advised that due to the changes of our fire district boundaries, the following people no longer reside within our fire district. With your approval, these individuals would like to stay as members of our company, and they are Donald Diso, the Hayford Road, Mike DeFay, Rock from Seventy-Six, Bruce Seagwin, Rock Nine B, Clarence Ashline Jr., Fairbanks Road, Brian Nagoldred, Clark Road. As always, we appreciate your quick response to these matters. Respectfully submitted, Dennis Roberts, Secretary.
I'll move that we accept Mr. LaPerry as the new member of the company for a probationary period of six months.
Second. Motion by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Hockrow. There being no discussion, all who's in favor, vote by your side of the line.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And I'll also make the motion that we approve that the five individuals that Phil read be allowed to remain as members of the fire company.
Motion by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Hockrow. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all who's in favor, vote by your side of the line.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Reports of the mayor and the board of trustees. I have a discussion in the NICOM 2004 Winter Legislative Meeting, twenty-second to the twenty-fourth of February. I believe at this time, I'm the only one interested in going, is there anybody else? Did we make a motion to approve that, or did we not? We need a motion to approve that.
Right.
Motion by trustee Hockrow.
Second.
Seconded by the other two. Trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all who's in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. The second thing on my agenda, I request an executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Second.
Seconded, a motion made by the mayor, seconded by trustee Penfield. Roll call vote, trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hockrow, aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Resolution, I have a resolution here for. Whereas pursuant to Article fifteen, section one-one-six of the United States of New York, election laws, the board of trustees of the Village of Rousas Point is charged with adopting a resolution adopting inspectors of the election, appointing a chairperson, and therefore fixing their compensation. Therefore, be it resolved, the board of trustees of the Village of Rousas Point do by hereby resolve that the inspectors of the election shall be Patricia Dia, Margaret Obray, Fay Grekware, and Mary Roscoe, with the alternates of Lynn Heber and Lisa Carden. The chairperson shall be Padia, the compensation be fixed at eight dollars and fifty cents. And the election chairperson, for the election chairperson, is eight dollars an hour for the inspector. This resolution to take effect immediately is the roll call vote. We need a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hockrow. Roll call vote, trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hockrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. I'll authorize the part to publish a legal notice on a public hearing for Local Law One and Two for the year 2004, and that's on exceptions for seniors. Might just have to have some pages to this.
There's, there's two, one has to do with seniors, Mr. Mayor, and the other one has to do with disabled individuals.
So they have to be voted separately. I put that in form of motion for Local Law One.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Menard. Any discussion? There being no discussion. Oh, roll call. Roll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hockrow. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And I put it in form of motion for Local Law Two, public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Menard. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call vote, trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee. Hockrow. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. I hope that's the last one I gotta do. No, didn't. Okay, that's it for me. Trustee Menard.
I have nothing to say.
Thank you, trustee Menard, trustee Hockrow. Oh my gosh, three more.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item, I request an executive session to discuss administrative personnel.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, roll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hockrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Second, I would like to request an executive session to discuss electric personnel.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Hockrow, seconded by trustee Menard, any discussion? No discussion, roll call vote, trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hockrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Third item is discussion of the Fourth of July celebration. If you remember from the last meeting, we talked about whether or not we want to approve the use of a dunking booth so that Mr. Mayor, Mr. Rivers, the mayor, could get a good bath at July. Think about it for a couple of weeks and come back, and how do you feel about it? Understanding that it could create us a liable position, however, just about everything, anything we could do could be so harmful.
I think we sent that last meeting. Yes.
So, how do you feel about it?
It's important. Any questions?
Any? I mean, I feel it's all right, as long as it's ran correctly. I think we should authorize it with, with the exception that to be able to pull it if we do see it getting out of hand, if there's kids in the booth or whatever else, people that aren't supposed to be there, so that we feel it's not supposed to be there.
In terms of people running it, or people are?
People are in it.
Yeah, they perch.
Sorry.
Yes, I think your answer would be correct. Well, they would much rather take shots at us anyway.
I couldn't because of other people sitting up there.
Most people have one person in mind.
I know. I was more sort of on the lines of, "Ducky, I think it'll be fun."
Do we need to approve that by motion?
No.
I think it would be best that we do.
All right, put that in form of motion.
No second.
Motion made by trustee Hockrow, seconded by trustee Menard, any other discussion?
Is there any, I'm sorry, I just have a question, I don't remember when we talked about this at the last meeting or not, I don't recall, but. Nothing changes our liability on it? No waivers, no sit at your own risk, nothing?
Basically.
So we are one hundred percent totally liable regardless of what happened.
Exactly, as I said, I thought when this was discussed before, the parade, or the fireworks, the carnival, we have had insurance certificates from these people.
Right.
Which covered the initial, what I call liability one, they would be, they would be the first. In this situation, obviously, if it's sponsored by the village and they're, and we're putting it on ourselves, you know, no matter what it is, we, we sustain total liability if anything were to happen, just like we, we do for almost anything.
Actually, for clarification, it isn't really being sponsored by the village, even though, look at the, look at the matter, it's part of us, it's being sponsored by the fire department.
But we are, they're covered under, as part of our solvency, for our insurance.
Still under.
Yeah, it still is.
Any other discussion?
So we're going with your motion with yours to get it?
Yeah.
Can you tell me exactly what you're saying here, if I understand?
Most of it is that we approve it with the understanding that we're able to.
It's closely monitored by the.
To pull it should not be run properly. And it will be run by, by. Please have to make that very clear to everybody involved. So get your bathing suit on, Mr. Mayor.
I wouldn't hold my breath. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. All who's in favor of the motion? Vote by your side of the line.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Also, on the Fourth of July celebration, we still have not tightened down a person as parade chair, and we're looking for help out there. We do have a meeting next Monday night, twenty-six, six o'clock, in this room, and if anybody would like to come forth and give us a hand, come on over.
It'd be crunch time.
Pardon me?
It'd be crunch time.
Well, he'll get in here, but I, you know. But we do, we do want to have a person, but I think we, I think we have a person, but he needs help. And, let's see, it's on the hook, it's on the celebrate. Oh, I just wanted to inform the board that effective next Friday, I'm going to be away for a period of time, I can't tell you how long it's going to be, but it certainly won't be longer than about two and a half months. And I'll be in constant contact with Mr. Baharmah by email and by telephone, I have a new phone card, and also I'm looking into whether or not there's a fax machine where I'm going to be. So, no, it won't be a meeting, I'll be here.
Is that it?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee, uh, trustee Hockrow. Trustee Penfield.
I have no report to be made either.
Oh, my, my, my. Trustee Jefferson isn't here, so probably got to do it. John, will you do that for the resolution?
Uh, authorize.
Right here.
Authorize village clerk to publish a legal notice for a D C, D E C permit on the Alphal project.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Hockrow, seconded by trustee Menard, any discussion? This has been one slow project. And it's starting to come together, I think. We've been forever, two years, three years, four years, whatever, get this.
Four years.
Thank you, John. Five years? This is the first step. Any, any other discussion? All who's in favor, vote by your side of the line.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Phil, what words of wisdom do you have for us tonight?
I just can't tell you anymore.
Thank you. All right, Sam?
I'd like to announce a budget workshop on February seventh at nine AM.
February seventh. That's on Saturday. You mind a coffee? Well, I can't have that table anymore. That's all I have. Thank you. Mr. Attorney, you have any words of wisdom for us tonight? Oh, thank you. Doug?
Got a couple things on the water project. Last time we met, you authorized me to instruct John Carter-Glock for bid for the circuitine piping. I believe you may have a copy of a letter in your packets tonight that explains the timetable for that bidding process. I encourage you to take a look at it, see if you have any questions. Not necessarily at this moment, but what you do is, please pass the questions on. We'll be following that timetable, so in the mid-February, you should have the information you need in order to determine whether you would like to contract the entire thing out or just go for materials only and install it with your own forces. And that's it for circuitine piping. On the roof, we talked about the roof last time. What I'm, I'm asking John to do is, is of regards to the roof at the water plant, the DE room, that we've converted into a more usable space now for chlorine storage. What we're going to do is, rather than give a change order to Luck Brothers to work on the roof, we'd like to solicit votes from smaller contractors, such as Trey Hand, that type, they've done a successful work at the village offices for flashing and everything. We feel that'll provide the most value for the village, and we'll be able to take a look at the cost of that project, and depending on how the budget finishes for the overall water project, you'll probably put that right in as part of that project also, and get it covered by the state department. Any questions?
Do we have a comparison, what is the cost of luck to do it?
We'll have that when we.
I'm sorry?
We can ask them.
So we'll know for a fact that a change order is not the best thing to do, is what you're saying?
Yes. Based on our experience, and the way things are going with Luck right now, the climate is such that a change order would not be approved, but we'll still get that number stayed and have a direct comparison.
You have a timeline on that, Doug?
On the roof?
Yeah. Probably spring.
Hopefully, we can have some votes back here. I don't know if we'll make your next meeting, but.
No, but I'm saying, the work didn't get done.
Oh, I would think it's relatively, yeah, five good days of weather, five days of good weather.
So might be winter project. Catch it on one of the thaws.
So, you know, I just, well, you know my feelings, and I want to express them, but the whole project seems to be at a standstill.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're seeing.
Unfortunately, we're not talking about much work to complete this, and I would like to see it completed, so that we definitely get into that March bonding. Whatever it is, Savory Volley Club.
Yep.
Because if we don't make it in March, who's the next one?
October.
And here we are paying, you know, bands, for bands all this time.
Yeah.
We really need to get that in there. Okay, thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
John?
Just kind of follow up on Doug. Doug had asked me to come tonight to just lend my own moral support, but we're all kind of frustrated with, haven't finished off the water project, and there's some real kind of minor stuff to be done, and that's why I was up here today. Be at a list, and we'll start fine tuning all the other things to get it moving as fast as we can.
Okay, is that it? Thank you, John. Mike?
Will you take the report? Yes, I'm Hussein, I'm the chairman of the truck committee. I'd like to thank the board for their support, for the fire department obtaining this truck. It's all we expected it to be. I appreciate the secretaries and the staff of making copies and telephone calls. It's taken almost three years to get this truck, and as I've said, it's all we expected it to be. And I hope I've kept you informed along the way. We haven't had it out in the bad weather, because the paint hasn't hardened yet, and the manufacturer said we should not wash it that often until the paint hardens. That's why you haven't seen it out on the highway, plus the highways are terrible. So thank you very much for all your efforts.
Thank you, Lewis. At this time, I'll open a meeting to the public to address the board. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm trustee Penfield. You may not, so, and my name is Dasi. I think you, for the last forty years, you saw me only once. I don't have the tendency to come often with my problems. I know you, I have been in public service like you did, and it's very tough job. I'm the one person who appreciates what you do, the sacrifice you do as far as your personal life, public life, and professional life. And being there, done that, you will not see me very often. The reason I'm here, I, you know, I have a situation regarding a lot on Montgomery Street, and I was wondering if it is on the agenda or a special meeting, Doug, to discuss the situation to the village myself? That's my first question.
It's not on the agenda, it is in our attorney's hands, and I believe our attorney and your attorney are talking.
Well, I appreciate that, and my question, the second question is, this is important for me, it's important for you, and as resident and taxpayer, is that not important on the board meeting, what makes it important? Why not?
We're waiting for advice from our attorney, that's what we pay him for, to advise us.
Okay.
And that, the correspondence had to turn over to him, and if he advises us, then I'm sure you'll be advised what's going on.
Okay, then we forget the legal running. As a taxpayer, again, when the lot was taken over, I never came here to ask those questions, I think that has nothing to do with the legal aspect of it. Why the village did not approach the county and claim any empty due at the time, before even I came to the picture, one year before? What is the procedure in this situation, and why was not that?
I can't answer that.
Again, the matter is, is under pending litigation at this point in time. It's not something that, in my opinion, we should be discussing in an open meeting, it's something we need to discuss in executive session. But again, Mr. Dasi, represented by counsel, exchanged correspondence, really is nothing more the board should get involved in discussing particular aspects of the litigation at this point.
What I, Mr. Mayor, what are you saying, that means I have no right? Is it the opinion of all the board that I cannot ask any question regarding the tax law of the village? What is the procedure of the village?
I did not tell you that, sir. I did not tell you that. I just told you that you can ask any question you want, but this particular incident is in the attorney's hands, and I don't believe the rest of the board, especially myself, are going to answer any questions on it without legal counsel.
I'm entering my legal counsel for one purpose and one purpose only, because I don't like the litigation. However, I am stuck to live here, and you gentlemen, ladies, you're stuck to live with me for the rest of our lives, you want it or not. And I wanted to make it a positive one and not unhappy. I'm not. So, what question you want me to ask you, Mr. Mayor?
At this point in time, I'm concerned nothing, you know.
Unfortunately, it's not, it shouldn't be not a question and answer type situation. Mr. Dasi has statements to make to the board, that's fine, but at this point in time, since the matter is pending litigation, you really can't answer his questions or respond to his questions. If he has statements to make, certainly feel free to make statements.
Very good. Can I ask a question, Mr. Attorney? I don't know the name, sorry.
Mr. Renee.
Oh, Mr. Renee, I don't know the name, I have it in the paper, but I never had a chance to, to meet you. Can I ask a question regarding the lot?
If it pertains again to this, this matter, Mr. Dasi, particularly your matter with the village, I'd have to tell the board to decline commenting on any of your questions with respect to those, to that issue. Again, the matter is pending litigation, and I would, my advice would be not to respond.
And I think this is on the record, that I cannot ask any question regarding the tax law. Is that what you're saying?
I, I think if it pertains at all to your matter, and/or issue, and/or issues that pertain to your matter, I would tell them not to respond because it was pending litigation, sir.
Sir, why I don't, I wanted to have it in writing, if I cannot ask any question regarding the general tax law, any tax law is pertaining to anybody.
What is your question?
Well, I want to know if I can ask, or not?
If it's a general question, I would say you probably could. If it pertains to your matter, I would say no, pending litigation.
Okay, my next question is. In the previous years, I believe a situation like it happened, in which the county take over our properties, what is the procedure of the village in this situation? Again. Okay, okay, gentlemen, Mr. You're gonna shut me off with your legal, then you will not see me until we see my attorney. Thank you very much. I'm gonna leave for now.
Does anybody else wish to address the board just now? If not, we are ready for recess.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, no discussion. We're in recess at eight minutes after seven.